Seventeenth of August, Benita Springs time. Invitation, invocation, please come forward and introduce yourself.
I am Ann Grandell, co-pastor of the Gulf Shore Church in Benita Springs.
Please rise for the invocation.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, God, for giving us this amazing nation. Send your Holy Spirit to each council and staff member, empowering them with clarity, wisdom, and divine strategies on every issue they are facing. Only you know what the best decision is. Bring unity and peace to all of our government leaders, federal, state, county, and here locally. May our citizens be informed voters as the election results will be according to your will. And as impossible as it may seem, use this election season to heal and unify our nation. We ask you to bless those who have served our community and are moving on. Protect our leaders and their families, helping them to have balance despite the many demands on their time. And as the new year begins, protect our children and school staffs. We need you, and we trust your word that says, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Okay. Pledge allegiance on unison, one, two, and pledge. One, two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Debbie, how about roll call?
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Present.
Councilman Forbes?
Present.
Okay, any changes to the agenda? We're okay. Mayor's welcome. Thank you for coming today. Hope it doesn't rain while we're here. Tuesday, next Tuesday is primary voting. So please exercise your right to vote in this country. A lot of people don't have that opportunity or that right. So please vote in the primary on the 23rd. Okay. Then we move on to public comment. Any public comment on agenda items? Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Jim Magnus. Been a resident of Benita Springs for over thirty years. We're building the Rooftop Riverside project on the corner of 041 and Reynolds Street. We were thrilled when we saw the project that you were looking at doing on the Banning Chief property from DPZ. We like the option number two. We do think that you might want to modify that a bit. You could keep the substation in its place. The parking would still be able to be done around it. You could then make a decision at a later date what you want to do with the substation if you need that right now. You'd still have room for the splash pad, it looks like to me, and you could also do some picnic tables and sunshades in that area as well. Botanas, looking to spend some money to do the lighting. I think that you ought to consider what Derek's looking at and come up with a plan and hopefully be able to let him do some funding that he wants to do for that project. I'd also like to speak very quickly on the bamboo property project that Baron Collier is looking at. Once you all get the lease, I ask that each one of you, mayor and council, have as many meetings as you need to with our very competent staff and community development to be able to be in a position, when it comes to second reading, to approve it. Please don't kick this project down the road. This council has worked with Baron Collier for the last two years on this project and needs to get to a final end and approval. If you have problems, hopefully these can all be worked out individually with staff and community development. Benita Springs and the city of Benita Springs has been looking to do something with that property for over twenty years to move it from a special events dusty parking lot into something that the city can be proud of and will activate the downtown. And finally, mayor, council, city staff, community development, like to thank you all for all the help that you've given us for the Rooftop Riverside project, and we look forward to an activated and thriving downtown Benita Springs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else to public comment on the agenda? Okay. Consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other vote, please?
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Any comments now that we approve, yes?
I have a question about number one on the Terry Street lighting improvements. Where's Matt? Oh, there he is. Are they burying, what are they doing there?
So that the, on West Terry Street from Eden Bridge Court, which is just, just short of US 41 to Pine Avenue, which is the entrance to the park, the FPNL overhead power lines are going underground. If you've noticed, if you've paid attention really since December, you've probably seen the activity where there's been a lot of digging and lines painted on the ground. So those power lines are going underground. They're, they're pretty far along on that project. Now, their timeframes are, can slide, you know, with storm seasons and things, but, you know, within the upcoming year, I would expect those power lines will be underground. With that, all of the existing streetlights that are there that are, that hang off of the poles will be gone. And so this project is to account for that, and it'll be decorative streetlights, similar to what we have in the downtown, but also similar to what we have on US 41. They're a little shorter height, so they're, you know, it's, they're more to human scale, I believe is how they, they call that. But this project is to put those lights in. Though, I believe the contractor plans on directionally drilling, very similar to what you see with FPNL. There's a lot of utilities in the ground, but that's kind of the finishing piece for that, other than the sidewalk on the south side, which we're working on design.
Thank you so much. I'm so glad to see completion of that project.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. There was one little island, island that kind of slipped under the agenda, item eight. It was kind of buried up underneath the consent agenda, and that's the Goodwin Street presentation.
Oh, yes, yes, I missed that. Matt, you get the honor of presenting that?
Yes, sir. So we have Nick Harrison and Rich Zalinski from American Structure Point, our design firm on this project, as well as Jay Bartlett from our legal firm to, he's here if we have any questions. But they're going to present the results of a workshop we held back in April for this project and make a recommended, for council to consider and then, you know, potentially approve, cross-section based on the feedback that we received from that workshop. It's a bit of a change, but it also accounts for the things we feel we need to make a safe corridor there.
Very good. Yes, sir.
Morning, Mr. Mayor and council.
Morning.
So today, kind of as Matt mentioned, we wanted to give you a brief summary on the status of the Goodwin Street project, summarize the results from the public meeting, talk about some minor changes that we've incorporated based on that, and then ultimately provide you all with our recommendation for the alternative in alignment for the Goodwin Street project.
I just, I do want to be clear, we are looking, should council choose for direction today, on which cross-section. Go ahead.
So just a brief summary of the project. So this is Goodwin Street from Terry Street to Matheson, so about, so the entire extent of Goodwin Street. It is a residential corridor. One of the reasons that we are actually looking to do this project is there is a history, even though it's a low-volume residential corridor, history of crashes, including injuries and fatalities, particularly related to pedestrians and cyclists. There's also, relatively speaking, higher speeds in this corridor. It is posted at thirty miles per hour, but being out on that site and just observing the traffic, people are traveling faster than that for, you know, especially what this corridor is. And then, as noted, there is a lack of pedestrian and bicycle accommodations along the street. The corridor has about thirty to, a varying thirty to fifty feet of existing right-of-way. The existing road, it consists of two ten-foot travel, travel lanes with two-foot, two-foot paved shoulders. There is open drainage, meaning there is a lack of any storm sewer and curb on this roadway. There's also a lot of residential driveways within this corridor. We do have a functionally obsolete or essentially a bridge that has exceeded its design life over Litner Creek, and there are several utilities that run along this roadway. So overall, the project goals are to improve safety, really focused on the multimodal aspect as well as controlling speeds. We want to improve the drainage and stormwater conveyance, as well as the pavement condition. And then kind of an overall thing is implementing, you know, the city's codes and standards, particularly as it relates to, you know, the bike and pedestrian plans. So as was mentioned, there was a public workshop held. I know a couple of you actually attended that back in April. We had approximately twelve people attend. There's about forty-six properties along the corridor. We did receive some good feedback, but overall, the people attended and responded were in favor of this project. A few things that we're incorporating into this project, that we also solicited feedback from the public on, were the typical section or the cross-section enhancements that we'll get to here in a moment, and other traffic calming and safety tools, including changing the geometry, deflecting the geometry to encourage lower speeds, adding lighting, implementation of mid-block or pedestrian crossings within the corridor, raised intersections or raised crosswalks, essentially a purposeful or functional speed table. Roundabout was considered at, at Matheson on the east end, and then we also looked at on-street parking, as well as landscape enhancements, similar to what's out there on Terry Street today. So the elements that we have used to evaluate the project and that we asked the council to consider when rendering a decision are, one, the fact that multiple alternatives have been considered for the project. Safety is a, is a primary consideration for the development of this project. Is this project consistent with long-range and area planning, you know, for the city? Environmental factors have been considered, as well as cost. So starting with the alternatives, these first three were the ones that were presented to the public. You'll notice they are very similar, but with nuanced differences. The first one, it consists of two fourteen-foot travel lanes, which would be essentially shared lanes for both cars and cyclists. You then have a, all, all alternatives have, will be reconstructing the pavement and adding curb and gutter to the outside. This alternative includes five-foot buffer spaces to incorporate lighting and landscaping. And then in this alternative, we have six-foot sidewalks on both sides, all within a sixty-foot right-of-way corridor. So this would require acquisition of right-of-way. Alternative two, similar, but as I mentioned, there are some nuances here. In this situation, we are using ten-foot travel lanes, so this would be primarily for vehicles only. To provide accommodation for bicyclists, there is a ten-foot shared-use path on one side, and then additional pedestrian accommodation will be a six-foot sidewalk on the opposite side. We have a little bit wider buffer spaces for, again, primarily for enhanced landscaping, but still fitting within the sixty-foot right-of-way corridor. The third alternative consists, includes those same ten-foot travel lanes, but then adds a five-foot bike lane. So in this situation, the bikes have their own space, but it is on the roadway. This also provides the five-foot buffer spaces and six-foot sidewalk on both sides of the roadway. So basically, it's just a different, these are different combinations of how we're accommodating vehicles, pedestrians, as well as the bicyclists within the corridor. So following that same presentation to the public and further discussion, there was preference for the option number two, but they, but the public did express desire to reduce the right-of-way footprint. As I mentioned, the current corridor is between thirty and fifty feet of right-of-way. These alternatives required sixty feet of total right-of-way. The, the traffic calming tools, the things I mentioned earlier, were well-received, providing additional opportunities, places for pedestrians to cross, as well as the roundabout at Matheson. The on-street parking that, that was, was shown as a conceptual alternative was not well-received by the public. So again, that's kind of noted here down in the additional feedback. Other things that were, were discussed were desire to not lower the elevation of the bridge over Litner Creek. Apparently, their folks like to use that for recreational purposes such as kayaking. And there was, there was a comment, there was a couple of comments to develop an aesthetically pleasing bridge, likely, again, similar to those bridges on Terry Street. So given that feedback, we took another look at the typical section, considering, you know, the, the public's interest. So alternative two, what we're calling alternative two modified, is essentially the, the section that we recommend. So what that includes are those ten-foot travel lanes, so primarily just for vehicular traffic. We've, we've, we've used the minimum buffer space that can accommodate lighting and landscaping between the roadway and, and the, the pedestrian accommodations. We've reduced the width of the shared-use path from ten-foot to eight-foot and kept the six-foot sidewalk, and we're basically able to save about seven feet of right-of-way for the entire corridor, which, again, reduces that impact to the frontage of those.
I hate to interrupt you, but where do the utility poles go?
The utility poles will either go in, in the buffer space. There's also the discussions.
I can answer some of this, but it's, I don't have a firm answer for you. In this situation, we're doing this for, for safety. This is not an aesthetic project. We've, we've had a death and injuries, as Nick pointed out. I've talked to FPNL briefly about it, and, and that kind of changes the dynamic with an underground power project. So either the utilities will be underground in this corridor, and it may or may not be a project that the city has to participate in, I don't know that part yet, or FPNL will look to see if they can feed power from other, other places within their network. You know, they may have easements in backyards. I'm not familiar enough, but what, if, if we give guidance to these folks today, is they progress in their planning of, of this project, their plans will be sent to FPNL, and they will have to develop a plan and work with us as to where the power goes.
Because I see in the pictures that they're, they're real close to the highway, and you're working on both sides, and I don't see them in this.
That's one of the, one of the areas they are, where the right-of-way is really thirty-foot wide, the power pole's gated, almost like a slalom ski gate, and so obviously, it'll, it'll have to relocate somewhere.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That was a, that was a great question. Thank you. So another thing, I wanted to make sure that was clear, so not only did we look at the typical or cross-section, we also looked at the alignment placement. And what I mean by that is, should this roadway be directly centered on where it currently is, or shifted north or south, to identify if there are any opportunities to minimize impacts, you know, to one side or the other. So we did look at alignment shifts approximately ten feet to the north and south, as well as remaining on center, and then assess impacts to properties, which, you know, may include damages to the property itself, or the actual structure, the cost of that, and then, you know, things like their driveways and parking. A lot of these residents, you know, do not have garages and use those driveways for parking off and have multiple cars, so the more you're encroaching that, even if you're not impacting their home physically, you are removing, you know, the parking that they use. So those things were also considered. So taking a look at, at the evaluation of that, you know, we looked at the number of parcels impacted, you know, the total takes, or what we would consider a complete acquisition of the land, the general right-of-way impact in acreage, those driveway parking impacts, approximate number of driveways that would be substantially impacted by that, and then the relative qualitative right-of-way cost. So what we've found, and I think it's fairly clear here, is that essentially leaving it, leaving the roadway where it currently is on the center alignment, does have, you know, minor impacts to most people along the corridor, but it's, they're not nearly as severe. Like if you shift to one, one side, you may, you may be able to minimize impact of someone's property on the, on the other side, but you're more severely impacting that particular property, whether it's actually taking their home, or, you know, really, you know, starting to butt that roadway right in front of their, you know, right in front of their front door. So given that, we also recommend the, the center alignment. So just to summarize, you know, things that had, things that occurred from the public meeting, we did remove the on-street parking alternative. We were able to minimize impact to about seventy-five percent of, of the parcels within the corridor, based on, based on, kind of as I mentioned, narrowing that in. The center, you know, the center improvements, overall minimizes the impact to the right-of-way, you know, including the number of parcels. The eight-foot shared-use path is still adequate per criteria for a shared-use path in right-of-way constrained areas, and this is, you know, fairly low volume, you know, in terms of usage compared to, you know, some of the other streets in the corridor. And we are recommending that the path can stay actually on the north side of the roadway through the entire limit. So moving from the alternative discussion of those factors onto the safety considerations. So again, what really all of these alternatives implement are accommodations for pedestrians and bicyclists, using those things such as the sidewalk, shared-use path, the mid-block crossings, and the raised crosswalks, as well as the roundabout at Matheson, and, and the lighting. So it's just they, these alternatives all address those considerations, they just do it a little bit differently, as I described earlier. In terms of long-range planning, as I mentioned earlier, the bridge over Litner Creek has reached its design life, and we do recommend that that be replaced. Standard replacement is a, developing a bridge that has a seventy-five-year design life. Also, given the fact that we are widening the, the footprint and adding those, you know, shared-use paths and sidewalks, that existing bridge could not, could not accommodate that. This project also is consistent with a number of resolutions and plans and codes by the city. I won't necessarily go through them all, but they're focused on the complete streets, the pedestrian bike plan, as well as administrative codes for bike and ped facilities. As far as environmental factors are concerned, all alternatives are fairly equal. Really, the main environmental factor that will be needed to consider is the bridge replacement over Litner Creek, and we're currently working with the agencies regarding permitting for that, for the, for the bridge. From a cost perspective, again, this is primarily a qualitative analysis, but as you see here, we have the three alternatives and the alternative two modified. And because the alternative two is narrower in overall width, we're able to also have a narrower bridge and minimizing the impact to the number of parcels, the relative costs for alternative two modified is, is the lowest compared, is the lowest comparative option. So to summarize those, you know, those, those Frenzel factors that we talked about earlier that we've used for the evaluation, really, in terms of the safety factors, they all, they all do well. You know, alternative two is, is best in that category because it does provide that, that separation of the bikes and pedestrians from the roadway, which is particularly important for, you know, your novice, your novice cyclists, where a lot of schoolchildren use this road, you know, to and from school, so providing that safe space for them is really important. Long-range planning, they're all consistent with, with the long-range plans of, of the city. Environmental factors are all the same, all relatively low, with the exception of Litner Creek. And then the cost, as we talked about, you know, all rank in varying order with the alternative two modified being the lowest. So following that, you know, our recommendation to the council for approval is the alternative two modified on the center alignment.
I make a motion to approve the modified alternative two. Does staff want to say anything?
Second.
Discussion? I just have some questions.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Number one, just from an aesthetic standpoint, do we have an idea what the new bridge replacement would look like?
So not, not in detail, but the thought is to provide consistency throughout this corridor and city, so more along the lines in terms of railings and treatments such that consistent with, you know, more of the old, like the old 41 corridor?
So the big blue pipe will be hidden within the structure?
That, and that, that will be, that will be, you know, we'll, we'll work with Benita Springs Water on that in terms of making that, you know, there's opportunities to, to go under, there's opportunities to actually attach it to underbridge, but, but we'll, we'll consider the aesthetics in that and how that's treated.
Because I mean, if you, when you're going over Lover's Key, sometimes you can see on the side that, I mean, we don't, if we're going to redo the bridge, the worst part about that bridge is that big blue thing on the side that looks like crap. So if we can get rid of that, we're redoing the bridge anyway.
Yep.
Get rid of that, in my thoughts. Also, how long are the people parking, I mean, it's inevitable, there's no way around it, the parking issues are going to happen, people are going to be mad, happens to be my district, so they're probably going to call me, question, how long is the longest time period of inconvenience as you're, as, to be considered? If I say, hey, it's going to be two weeks, and I know it sucks, that's okay, but if they, if I tell them it's a month, I have a problem, what are we?
That's a major project, that's going to take a couple of years.
So we're going to take away their front yards for years?
It'll, we'll, as we develop into construction plans, we can work on phasing, but that is a large project. It's a complete reconstruction of the road. There's no drainage infrastructure there, so it will be a major project.
Well, I understand it's needed. I just, if I have an idea of timetables and what the phasing is going to look like, I can prepare them for it prior to it happening, which will alleviate.
We can, as we get further along in the design, you know, those type of answers we can certainly communicate, but, I mean, the, from this, from where we are in the process, this is a very major infrastructure project.
And then the last question. The fifteen, so going from the fifteen to the ten, just the rationale, and I'm not, I mean, he's more qualified to speak on multimodal transit, but just from a curiosity standpoint, when you were doing the design, fifteen aesthetically looks like it's, it's comfy for the cars and everybody like that. What was the rationale for going to the ten and then putting, making it multimodal as opposed to the car, the, the bikes being on the road? And like I said, I'm not invested either way, I'm just curious what led you to do that instead of the other?
So you're referring to the, the actual lanes on the pavement? Is that, okay. So where, where that's driven, there's a couple of reasons for it. One, we talked about, you know, the need to control or manage speeds. So the narrower your pavement is, the, it, it essentially encourages drivers to s-. your pavement is, the, it, it essentially encourages drivers to slow down. So the wider your pavement is, I mean, think of, you know, driving down a, a three-lane highway with nobody, nobody around you, you're, you can, you can go as fast as you want. So it gives you the feeling of, you know, again, encouraging that speed. So that, that was one aspect. And then it was mainly focused on also providing a safe space for, as I mentioned, the more novice users of, of the facility, really considering children in that area. So providing them that, that shared-use path to use. And, and again, that, that section does not prohibit bicyclists from using the road.
Right.
Like there's nothing that prevents them from doing it. So your experienced cyclists, you know, can feel free. It's not a heavily traveled road, so the, the opportunity that you're really conflicting isn't, you know, isn't really there, but that's primarily the reasons.
Yes, Matt.
Nick answered it, but just one of the things, maybe if you're trying to compare what we did on West Terry to this area, you really, you, there's a context issue there. So that, that's smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood. And so the on-street bike lanes and what we built on Terry is really a seven-foot wide lane. It's two-foot of striping. It's a five-foot area that's used by the, the road bikers. That's a different corridor, you know, and then, you know, particularly on the north side, there's not a lot of driveways. This is really just kind of an interconnected neighborhood street. And so, you know, part of that is, like he said about the novice users, when we were doing the downtown project, there were a lot of kids that are walking there. And so, you know, when, when you can't take, you know, when you don't have all the right-of-way in the world to deal with, it's a balancing act, and really the thought process is give, give more space on the separated sidewalk or pathway for folks, you know, given the context.
No, I appreciate that. That's, I, I'm excited about it. I think it's a good idea. I'm ready to, oh.
Fifty-three feet now. How many, you're going to put it in the center so that, we're going to have to get road access from both sides of the street? So we're going to have a lot more people.
Are in property from both.
They have to buy, we're going to give the market value for five feet or whatever it might be?
That, that is correct, and that, that'll be, you know, worked out through the acquisition process, yes.
There's a process that we go through for that.
Is there a lengthy process? It can be, I suppose.
It can be. You know, for planning purposes, you know, this is the start of that process. We will be back as they develop plans and really can show you exactly what it is with some more concrete steps. But once you, once you really enter the, fully the process, I'd say a minimum, you got to plan on a year before you have, you know, the, the ability to utilize the property. You may still not be closed out.
I'm looking for three years.
Yeah, this, this is a major, this is a major project.
Okay. We have a motion on this?
Yeah, just one question real quick. If somebody doesn't sell, does that in any way stop?
That's where the right-of-way acquisition process occurs, and the answer is, we, we do offer fair market value, and there's a legal process that ultimately would compensate the owner and provide the right-of-way to the city.
I mean, because it seems like, like the rails-to-trails part of the problem is.
This is not, not like that.
This is the difference.
So they have the option to?
No, there's a legal process that would, that would allow it to be.
Okay.
Any other comments? Yes?
Matt, the capital improvement plan for FY 23 shows a total carryforward plus future budget of about $6 million three. Is this alternative two as modified going to fit within that budgeting parameter?
We don't know at this point. We, you know, we anticipate it will. We've, you know, we, but obviously we've been in an inflationary period. I tried to account for some of that. The bridge modifications were a little more significant than we first looked at, if you look back in the CIP, but we think that's a fair number for, at this point where we are.
And are drainages on both sides?
It'll, it'll vary. It'll probably interconnect, you know, we're, if you give them direction today, we'll, we'll know more answers in a few months as to what that drainage system actually looks like. I can tell you now, there is little to no drainage infrastructure there. There's very, it's just a really old corridor. That's why the right-of-way widths are, you know, so varied and.
And this will have entrance off of a bamboo?
Yeah, it, it's in the, the project corridor right in the beginning.
Okay. All right, call for a vote?
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, guys.
You'll be back.
See you again soon.
Talk of the banyan tree, Tana A. Is the Botana are coming up? Mr. Corey, or what are we going, you want to introduce us?
Well, yeah, this is a continuation of the discussion that we
Thank you, gentlemen.
had previously concerning the lighting of the banyan tree, which then got into a discussion about what to do with a whole block. And DPC had given us some alternatives to start thinking about. Derek was not able to be at the last meeting. COVID is still around, and he was suffering from COVID at that time. So he's recovered, and I wanted to give him the opportunity to address counsel on the project.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you again, counsel and Mr. Mayor, for allowing me and the Benita Springs Historical Society to be involved with the Banyan Tree project. I personally want to thank you guys for being so level-headed in your leadership and asking you to stay the course on this revitalization concept. I apologize, like Chris mentioned, for not being here last meeting. The COVID bug decided to grab me, but I'm luckily, I'm here and I won that battle. The DPC concept has incredible potential for a clear, un, underutilized square. It really shows the potential of what the really truly only square we have in Benita Springs could actually look like. But we are a little concerned on the overall structures that they're showing and also the, the overall plan. When I initially presented before council in May, BSHS, Benita Springs Historical Society, was concerned about the overall condition of the banyan tree and how it could be reutilized and possibly even lit, lit up at night. And that's what the society's main focus is. We were not planning on coming up with an entire concept, per se, for the entire square. We don't have a budget for that. But we would like to be in partnership with DPC to, to work together with the city and come up with a comprehensive plan that will utilize the square to the best ability of Benita Springs. I was a little concerned with the design because it removes a lot of the native trees that are there. It also does not really mention the time capsules that are located within the square and also the memorial that's already present. Counsel requested that we do a topographic study of the tree, which we have done. Is it in the slide?
It's attached.
Do I hit this or, oh, okay.
Oh, no, they, they have it attached.
Okay.
Previously as well.
I think there was one councilman that was concerned about where, if there were buildings put onto the square, if that would affect the, the livelihood of the tree. And if you look in the topographic study, the roots of the tree do not go past the circumference of the canopy. If you know anything about biology and banyan trees, especially in sandy soil, if they feel secure, they're not going to drop any more aerial roots. The tree was, and I believe is maintained by an arborist. It was cut back considerably back in the 90s. And when they did that, it really allowed the base of the circumference of the tree to stabilize itself. So the aerial roots do not go past the canopy. That being said, our engineering firm came up with the concept of building kind of like a round circle around the tree with interlocking paving. The lights would be surrounded by the circumference of the tree, lit up at the bottom and up into the tree itself. There would also be park benches around the tree, kind of forming a barrier so people don't go around the roots. The total cost of the project that the society is willing to fundraise for is about $100,000 for our phase, which would be the walkway, the lighting, and the benches, and the plantings. Right now, the Baywater Fund has donated $15,000 for the project. The society has roughly eight, $7,000 into it, so we still have some additional monies. I have heard from different community leaders that they are willing to start donating to get the Banyan Tree project going. But of course, I don't want to pursue that until I have a, a final vote from council to move forward in phase one at least of the Banyan Tree project. That's where I'm at right now, so. Any questions?
If I can make one clarification on DPC's presentation for the public, and you might have missed it. There is no intention, and they did account for the time capsule, which Nicole's staff has located. There was no intention of relocating that or the Blue Star Memorial sign. That was all to be kept. The only thing that was discussed that would have to be looked at at its current location is the Fallen Officer Memorial Wall, which is actually the entryway sign to the substation. That was the piece, and they, they showed that as possibly being a memorial corner to recognize all of those items. But we, we have it surveyed, and the information was given to DPC where the time capsule was, where the Blue Star Memorial. And there was no intention of moving the current clock, which was donated by the Benita Springs Rotary Club.
I think it's important that council, I mean, we even have it on our, our logo, you know, small-town charm, big, bright future, that we make sure that this square is really the crown jewel of Benita Springs. It, it can be the focus point for all the efforts the council has done to revitalize downtown. But I'm very concerned, knowing DPC's other projects, they sometimes can be very out there and left field in a sense of, you know, graffiti on the tree, lighting up from, I understand, and removing, you know, some of our existing trees there to make it more look like a homogenous-style park. Benita is a unique town in the sense that, once again, we were so poor in the past that we didn't have the resources like Fort Myers and Naples. And a lot of those trees were probably planted as, meaning for some reason, I, I don't know. You know, for instance, like the pine forest or the pine, the, the, the long-leaf pines that are behind the banyan tree. Those are actually endangered tree now in the state of Florida, especially the growth that those trees are. They're probably as old as, as the banyan. I would hate to see those get removed, just to plant more palm trees. You know, we, we just have to make sure that it's cohesive to the park that's across the street with the ban shell. You know, that wasn't really discussed by DPC. I just want to make sure that, that Benita keeps its small-town character, especially in downtown. And this kind of is a one-shot deal for the square, and I think it's kind of involving into a, a huge, a huge development, I guess you could say is the best term for downtown. I, I just was more focused on the banyan tree. I didn't realize it would be, it would become such a, a great design. And DPC did not reach out to the society whatsoever. And I want to make sure that's aware, because I, I thought that, according to council, that they would reach out to us. They did not. They didn't ask any kind of information about the tree or what our plans were. So we were a little concerned about that.
There was a call between the consultant and DPC.
But that was after the plan was done.
That was organized when, between, before, before it came before.
That's not what I was told by Mr. Smith, who we hired to do the, the engineering part on our side.
I've got a big concern about the sidewalk around the tree, inside the, inside the canopy. If there's any way to kill that tree, we're going to do it.
Well, the, the interlocking.
I don't believe that there's interlocking going to let the, let roots drop down. That's an important part for them.
Well, if the tree is, is maintained, like it is now, the aerial roots will not go past the canopy because the tree feels stable.
But a canopy is way outside of your sidewalk.
Right, but the, the. Right, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor. But the interlocking allows the water to seep through when, in heavy storms, and it does not affect the, the aerial roots whatsoever.
Well, I, I hate to disagree, but I don't want to kill that tree. And what does the historical society have to do with a tree?
Well, it is our logo.
Huh?
It's, it's on our logo. It is also the second-most historic tree in southwest Florida. It was planted in 1921. It is, the, like I mentioned before, the, the town square back before there was any kind of social media.
Grass around there. What, you know, what, why do we got to walk around the tree?
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to speak too.
Can I finish up, please?
Sure, I thought you were.
Why can't we just walk around, why can't we just put grass around it? Why do we have to build a sidewalk?
Well, I.
Walk around a tree?
If, if you go to most towns in the United States that have historical trees, they are exemplified and, and shown as the crown jewel of the town. And pretty much every tree I've ever seen has some kind of walkway around it.
Other question is, all right, you're going to light this up till, till what, nine o'clock at night? Or you're going to light it up all night and breed all the bugs in and all the, all the animals are going to be affected? When it's dark, it should be dark. It's the way nature is, nature is, is sun goes down, it's dark. When the sun comes up, it's light. I don't need, you know, you're affecting everything with these lights. Couldn't you put a solar panel in there to light these things up?
That's a possibility.
You don't have to go under the ground.
Well, everything that will be done professionally with an arborist that knows exactly what they're doing for the lighting.
Oh, exactly what they're doing?
Right.
There's no such thing. Yes, Amy?
I, I'm not ready to move on this or anything else at this point, because I think the whole point of having DPC, and maybe the historic society wasn't aware of it, is that we wanted to have a total picture of that whole area. We didn't want to focus on one aspect. I think everybody on the council reveres that tree. We all understand the iconic nature of it, and I'm much in favor of trying to feature it as part of whatever we do down there. But we're just starting this process. And I think, I'm glad you came forward. I'd like to include it with the, the material that's been put forth by DPC. We haven't even discussed what DPC said. We haven't had a lot of input from our residents. So it's a long process. This council had had some concepts of what to do there years ago, before the, the library went in, and it just fell by the wayside. And I, for one, said, well, you know, before we start doing a little bit here and a little bit there, we should have a total package. I completely agree with you. Not only should we include a commonality with the ban shell and the Riverside Park, we're, we're having a project going forward, it appears, for bamboo. What goes into there should be complementary to what's going in here. So we shouldn't duplicate anything that's going into the other place. I'm all for making walkways around. I don't know if the one that you designed is the proper one. I think we have a lot of room and time to, to do this properly. And you're, the concepts that you presented, I think we can also subscribe to, but I, I'm not ready to look at one part of it without looking at it in a total package.
Yes, Chris?
Well, I differ with Amy on this. It seems to me the way to approach this is phase it. It seems to me the way to approach this is phase it. I think we could probably all come to agreement that we would like to see the Banyan Tree lit. Maybe not everybody wants to see it lit, but I think probably a majority does. I think we also could work on the parking spaces around the square to add to our parking downtown and to provide space for people that want to visit the square, as well as visit the library, as well as visit the rooftop food truck park. So, you know, the Bamboo Village project, I mean, there's buildings and everything else between that square and the river. So, but I'm not opposed to looking at, you know, making sure that eventually this thing fits in, but it would seem to me like we could move ahead with the lighting and the parking spaces, that regardless of which direction we go, we know that we want to do that lighting and we want to do the parking spaces. So that's my thoughts on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jesse.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, thank you. I agree with Derek's assessment that the downtown, you know, the Banyan Tree is really the heart of the downtown. And we're not gonna get another chance to do this, right? So I completely agree there. And I appreciate the work that's been put in by DPZ and by y'all on this. I think this is a larger discussion, and I mean, you all, Amy and I aren't always on the same page with everything, but I think I very much agree with the sense that we wanted a whole picture of this, but that is the key piece of what that will look like. So it has to go along with whatever the final result of Collier is, with Collier is. If that goes through, then we need to make sure that this is gonna go with that. And I think moving ahead on the main part, before we know what the whole looks like, isn't the direction that I think we need to be going at this juncture. Additionally, as far as the funding side of it goes, I think this is something that, you know, we've all wanted to work on for a long time. I think this needs to be something that we budget on, and we need to be, you know, we need to ensure that we're driving on this as the city. And the Historic Society, whoever else wants to get involved is a passenger in that. So we need to understand that, you know, if we give up autonomy on how this is gonna work, we lose the ability to control how this goes. The downtown should be controlled by the people who are elected to run the city. That would be us, and we have committees for the purpose of helping us do that. And I think that in this process, we need to make sure that we understand what those rules are and that we follow them appropriately to ensure that we get the final product that everybody would like. So, that's my opinion. I think it's, yeah, thank you.
Amy, did you know?
No, I was just making a joke.
Okay, anybody else?
I do.
Yes?
I think Laura was...
Fred, you can go ahead, Mr. Mayor would prefer.
All right. I like the concept, and I think that having the tree illuminated at night is a good idea, although I think probably we would come up with something like maybe lights out at nine o'clock, except on very special holiday season, maybe go a little longer. I do like the fact that we're not gonna put a lot of buildings on it. We don't want to put buildings on there. Shade structures is a good idea, because they can be moved if the tree did somehow start to expand. I think, I agree with what Amy said and Jesse said. I think we want to work on this some more, but I think we want to commit that we want to light the Banyan Tree up, but only from the ground up. You don't want to put anything up in the branches or on the branch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Botana, and the Historic Society for coming and doing something about this, one of our jewels, because we've got a bunch of jewels downtown. But this is a special one, and I kind of like dawn to dusk, because I would arrive at the Shangri-La establishment at six in the morning, and the Banyan trees would all still be lit. It's so beautiful. And then they're off, you know, and so it's nature, dawn to dusk. And it would be nice to have benches and chairs and tables to sit at, so that families could go to the library, get a book, go to the rooftop and get something to go, and then go sit and read a book together as a family. So it incorporates, so I don't know why we can't do it in stages, because most things do go in stages. And since Baywater is so graciously also donating, we kind of don't want to lose that money. And so maybe the council could get together and decide on the lighting and the, not maybe a sidewalk yet, but we could incorporate, because benches can be moved, tables can be moved, but to get the process started, which would also tell other investors, we are dedicated to downtown coming alive again. And so I just am very thankful.
Okay, I'd like to thank Derek Botana here for bringing this subject up, because we've been delinquent in approaching that whole, the whole block. And now DPZ is on board, and we've got some other ideas and stuff. And in the future, in the not-too-distant future, we're gonna blend these all together. And I have no problem with making that area much improved, but we have to make decisions. And you've heard my comments about killing that tree would be the worst thing in the world. I'd go crazy. But I want to thank you for your presentation, and we'll be getting together on this pretty soon, right? Arlene, you're gonna set something up?
Well, you have a CIP to begin planning for that location. That starts October 1. There would need to be a public workshop to design, for there to be feedback on all the different concepts. That would need to be presented back to council as well. So there's several stages.
We're gonna move forward with this. Thank you, Derek.
And you guys are good with that?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Electric utility franchise.
All right, this is. An ordinance of the city of, this is the second reading, public hearing of an ordinance to the city of Benita Springs extending the electric utility franchise for Florida Power and Light Company and providing for an effective date.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion to deny?
Correct.
Second, okay, public comment or comment on the, we got public comment, I don't know what.
What do we deny?
Discussion?
Either way, discussion here, we're gonna have...
I just want to understand what you...
Yeah, I'm trying to understand.
You don't want to, you don't want to go back to the original rate, is that what you're saying?
We put a sunset in there to begin with for a reason, so that way, you know, this tax would not continue on the people and, you know, to force the next council to make the decision to basically raise taxes, because if we do nothing, it's gonna roll back. So today, if we vote yes to continuing this, it's a tax increase to the people, because if we don't do anything, it's gonna go away. So, you know, the question is, do we want to raise taxes, or do we want to go back to the role?
Or do we want to keep it the same? Because it's a savings per household of what, $30? But millions to the city it'll cost. So, well, all right, then the other one's more. But that's a million dollars in terms of inflation.
It's a million, well, it's $800,000 that we took away from the people years ago.
No, 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 no. Per person, per household, you're talking $25.
The city has a whole...
Was it 18? Lisa, give us a summary.
The principle is there, it's not the amount.
And it was initially to pay down our debt. And that's why the sunset was in there, because it was about the length of time that, you know, that we wanted to pay down the debt. So we've done that, it's supposed to sunset, we should let it sunset.
And times have changed. We have inflation, we have recession at the same time, so stagnation, and, which means we're gonna have, like, some hard hits coming.
The taxable value of people's houses.
One at a time, we got one shot at the apple now. We can't, we're not gonna keep going back and forth on this between two people. Jesse?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I agree with Mike in the sense that we could be the first governmental body that actually let something sunset today, if we wanted to do that. I don't think that's ever actually happened. And, you know, yes, $100,000 is a decent amount of money, but if you look at our overall budget, it's a ton of money. And then if you look at that in consideration to the fact that our ad valorem went up 17%, and how many millions of dollars that is, it's not even, I mean, it's not, you're not, the financial, it's not in the ballpark difference. So, you know, it's not the fact that it's $30. It's the fact that we have the ability to do what we said we were gonna do, which was use this as a mechanism to pay off debt. We've done that, and it was supposed to sunset. That's what we decided we were gonna do, and, you know, I believe when we say something as a city, it means something. So for me, Mike, with you.
Okay, anybody else? I got a comment on it, I'd like to agree with Mike on this, since he was here. I remember vaguely when we did increase the amount. It'll go back to 3%, is that what it is?
Correct.
It's four now, and it'll go back to three. So it's not really taking away much money from the city. The city's got...
No, from the person, you mean?
Yeah, wait, wait, one at a time, huh?
Yeah, I'm just curious what you were saying.
If you let him talk, you could hear.
Oh, come on now. Okay, now let's settle down here. The people don't, we, the city with our grants and all, and people moving in the city, the property values going up. We don't need, I don't think the city needs the money as much as the people need the money to buy groceries. So I'm gonna go along here with Mike and Jesse.
Mayor?
Yes?
I understand what has been commented here about sunsetting, but some of these special service revenues serve different purposes within your whole revenue pot. This, these special service revenues tend to tap different people besides homeowners. They tend to tap, in addition to homeowners, the 50,000 people that come here during the thing. So that's one reason why you have these special revenues, okay? And it also provides some kind of stability to the revenue pool. And even though it seems like, I mean, I don't totally agree with the fact that we don't need the money, because further on in the meeting, we're gonna talk about something that we focus on, which is unassigned fund balance. And I think that number is 4 million something, all right? It's not a bad number, but it's a little bit lower than we've carried in the past. And if we don't do this, then that number is gonna be 3 million something, all right? And then we have another one that we're gonna talk about further on, I think. So the choice is whether we want to have that strong financial background or start to our budget year this year and in the future with more strength than less strength, all right? So I'm of two minds. I think that I'd rather tap some taxation for people that come here that are not permanent residents. So that's why I like these kinds of taxes a little bit better than the others. But I don't know how you balance it. I think you have to look at it all together. But in the same instance, when you look at the tax rate, small changes there are, they're de minimis in a sense. Like, for example, the proposal was to go from 8.17 to 8. So if you're a million-dollar house, you save $17. So most of that, you know, I mean, that doesn't mean anything. And for 80% of the people that, you know, have a 400 or below, you're gonna get $6. And that's just showmanship, you know, and I'm not in favor of that either. So I don't, I'm not 100% sure. I think I'm gonna vote against your proposal, but I understand what you're saying, and I know the problem with sunsetting. And I agree with that kind of concept, but I guess I'm cautious going forward because of the situation we're here. And I focus, I have been since I've been on the council, on that unassigned fund balance, because we, you know, when things come forward, we want to be ready to do what we have to do, and we don't want to put the city into a financial bind, because we have the luxury of being so unbelievably prudent. So I think I'm gonna vote against this, but I understand what you're saying.
Yes, Mike?
Just one more comment. It does affect everybody that's here, living here and comes down, snowbirds, because it's the power bill. So everybody that rents, everybody that owns it, it doesn't matter, it doesn't discriminate. So by letting this roll back, you're gonna let the people keep their money each month, instead of a one-time thing on the tax bill, like you said, you know, a million dollars, it's $17, it's hardly anything. But, you know, this is gonna be a few dollars each month, and it's gonna add up over the year. It may only be $36 for the year, but that's per person, and...
But you have...
That's something that they can do with it. You're giving the money back to the people at the lowest level that can use it the most.
Yeah, but you're doing it to different people, was my point.
It's everybody, it's anybody that has a power bill.
Well, but you're tapping not primarily the homeowners, but it's okay.
Well, anyways...
I'm gonna vote no, you could vote what you want.
I understand that.
Mr. Mayor, you have two more comments.
Yes, Fred?
I have mixed emotions on this. I understand what Mike and Jesse are saying, I don't disagree with them. The only thing I think that we are overlooking, the economy is doing this. And I'll give you a point. Hunter's Ridge, we had four homes for sale, 800 grand. They didn't sell. They would have sold in this frenzy that was going on maybe three, four months ago. So the prices were dropped down to 700. That's a pretty good drop. So we, more than likely, we're gonna have a lower ad valorem projection next year, possibly beyond that. I, and then all these things wash each other's hand. I'm not opposed to going back to the 0.8, but I think we have to be real clear. What I would be in favor of is maybe a compromise where we would extend the sunset date like a couple of years, so we see what's going on. Because if things go the way I hear the economists talking, it's gonna be pretty, it's gonna be longer than the bubble when it blew up. But I don't know what's gonna happen. I don't think anybody here does.
By keeping the rate up, it's gonna help people move here, because they're gonna pay more electric bill. That's gonna help people want to buy a house, because they're gonna, it's only 25% of tax that we put in there for a reason. We said we could sunset it. I don't know why we got it. She brought up that 0.80 ad valorem, and the example she puts in there is that it's all for the homesteaded, 3% maximum. So everybody up here, except for Jesse, I think, pays rent, does not pay rent. Now, the landlord's gonna have to raise the rent for everybody. Now, who pays, who rents? It's not the, it's not the high-class people aren't paying rent. They own. But the less fortunate people are gonna pay more.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm not really sure where you're going with this, but maybe Lisa could come and give us a summary?
No, not at this time. She's coming up later. Okay, we got a motion on the table?
Well, I still have something to say.
Yes?
So if we're gonna cut it, if we're gonna cut it from four to three, what do we take out of the budget to balance the budget? Where's that?
Can we make a deal on ad valorem, and then cut the other two and leave ad valorem, something like that? Are we allowed to work these, work something like, I mean, what are our options in regards to these three? Is there any ability to say, hey, we get rid of these two, we leave this one how it is? is, or vice versa, something like that?
Leave it and extend for.
You can indicate, you can indicate your intention to make it up on the ad valorem, if you, if, but you're ultimately gonna make that decision at that meeting.
We got plenty of money coming in.
But to answer your question, later on in the budget update, we're gonna see that we're gonna bring in almost eight hundred thousand more than we expected on the budget that we looked at earlier.
So then we're negating it by losing the eight hundred thousand?
We'd go back to what we thought we were gonna have at the last budget meeting.
And we're not taking into consideration that we're in stagnation, both the recession and inflation simultaneously is going to hit, and it's going.
Mayor, would you ask Lisa if that addition is included in her budget update? Is that, where is she?
She's not here.
She is too.
Oh, there she's hiding.
Yeah, so is, so when you go to the unassigned fund balance, does that take into consideration that increases also?
Your budget is at the current tax rate. So the current tax rate is what's included in your budget.
But you have a page that says these are increases, you know, I forgot what page it is on.
Page five of the budget update.
Page five, increases. And then further on, you have unassigned fund balance.
Those increases are reflected in.
They are, so they already are reflected, so you can't compensate for a loss of revenue. Isn't that correct?
Excuse me?
Ms. Councilman Gibson just said that we already have the eight hundred thousand covered because of the increases that you have on your sheet.
That would, the unassigned fund balance would be decreased by, if this, these taxes are not maintained.
So, so we need, so I agree.
Or a million dollars.
But the summary proposed changes?
Yeah, and those are, those are just for the remainder of this fiscal year. What we're seeing, and please note that in your budget, there are reductions projected for next fiscal year. Those are coming from the states, or trends that we're seeing, economic uncertainty. Just to be clear, that was one of the points I was gonna make when I was up here, that this is just a, it's a delayed, we had adjusted our current year collections for the remainder of the fiscal year, based on what we were seeing from the state and the economic uncertainty. And what we found in the last couple of months, that we haven't had as much of a reduction as we planned for next year, and we're getting from the state. So I apologize about that, but.
Aren't we, don't we have more people living in Benita this year than we had last year? We do have a large, an increase in number of people. We have more people paying electric bill. So no matter what, our revenue from the electric company's gonna be increased.
I think we're projecting that to go down based on the economy, and some of the areas, some of our significant areas, there are projecting some decreases in some of the economic-based things, so.
Can I call a question?
God knows, these other people don't know.
Can I call the question?
Yes.
Yeah, good idea.
Councilwoman Carr?
No. Well, so I don't wanna vote for Jesse. So should I say yes? Jesse's, not per se, personally. Jesse, you voted.
A vote of no is against the motion.
The motion that Mike Gibson put in?
Okay, and you seconded it.
Just to let it sunset.
I do not want it to sunset.
Mayor Steinmeier?
I agree with Mike, yes.
Councilman Curry?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Forbes?
No at this time.
Councilwoman Cumbaba?
No.
Councilman Pardon?
Yes.
Three fours. Okay, three four.
Okay, folks, you're gonna pay more.
Mayor, I'd like to, Mayor, I just wanna make a comment. I totally agree with what Councilman Curry said, that it's fine to do all this control of revenue, but it has to start with the expenditures. So if we, if we, as a council, sincerely wanna do what has been expressed here, that's where we have to say, we could direct the staff to say, we're gonna get a hold of all these expenditures that are going on. I don't, I mean, I don't think, I'm not suggesting that we don't, they haven't been prudent here, but that's how you, that's how you cut revenues. You control expenditures. You don't do it the other way.
And we're in the process of doing the budget, so we could still do that.
Well, that's.
And what are we gonna do?
Okay, folks, okay.
I want the baseball, I want the soccer.
Let's move along.
I have one thing on this. I don't have time to explain to you buying and selling at the top of a real estate market, and I don't know if you get it if I did, but because I don't currently own a house, doesn't mean anything in regards to my finances, or, or, or the quality of my character, because I think you just said people who rent aren't of the highest quality. I don't know what the hell that means. And listen, from, from somebody, somebody being given a home, and having a home because they were given one, and other people who buy and sell homes when it's appropriate due to their finances in the market is one thing. My entire district, half of them are renters, so I don't appreciate the insinuation or the lack of understanding of markets, and I don't have time to explain it to you.
Let me explain what I was trying to say, I must have miscommunicated.
Can't we just take a vote?
Would you be quiet?
And move on.
We took a vote.
And move on. It failed, move on. You guys can discuss this later.
That's fine, we can move on.
I wanna talk about it right now.
Okay.
Okay. The numbers that Lisa put in is for a three percent, for people that are homesteaded, that have possibly, ad valorem tax goes up maybe three percent.
Right, I understand that.
Okay. Now, if we keep the high rate.
Right.
Who's gonna pay the extra tax but the landlord? And who's gonna pay the landlord but the people that rent? I didn't mean to put, downgrade the people that rent. It's not my, not my idea.
Maybe that was not your intention, but it's what you said. It's what you said.
I don't know how else to put it.
It's fine.
The people that own houses.
Do you understand that people sometimes don't own a house because they're in the process of selling and buying due to where the market's at, right?
Either they're saving up to buy a house.
Right, right, all options.
But my point is that the people that are gonna have the seventeen percent or fifteen percent increase are the landlords.
Right.
Who puts it on to the people.
I get it, I get it.
The homeowners are stuck at three percent.
I get it.
Everybody here, except for you and I, are stuck with the three percent.
I get it completely.
Okay, I don't mean to insult you.
For my people at home who are watching this, okay, so.
I'm just trying to make an example.
I get what you're saying, and I just wanted to, I wanted to comment that, you know, for the people who are watching that, you know, maybe you didn't mean what you said, but I had to say something, because the insinuation was not appropriate.
Well, I don't, I didn't mean it that way, and I'm sorry that you think it was, you know, you think you're gonna get picked on all the time.
No, it's, no, no.
I love people.
No, I get it, I get it, and I'm not worried about getting picked on.
And I'm trying to save the people that rent a whole lot of money.
It's, well, it's not a whole lot of money.
Buy a house and pay more tax.
Listen, I understand how the process works.
Locked at a three percent.
Right.
Okay, all right.
You need, you need.
Yes, folks.
Need to make a motion to move forward with the ordinance at this time. So the motion to deny the ordinance failed.
Make a motion to move forward to maintain.
Call for a vote?
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumbaba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next item is a second reading, a public hearing of an ordinance of City of Benita Springs, Florida relating to local communication services tax rate, providing for intent, providing for local communication services tax rate, and providing for notice to the Department of Revenue, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to deny. Second. Same grounds, smaller amount.
Call for a vote?
Public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter?
Councilman Curry?
I vote against the motion.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
I don't want to sunset it. So which way am I supposed to vote?
You would vote no.
No.
Councilman, Councilwoman Cumbaba?
No.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
How much was the amount?
We're of the lowest, three point six one percent.
Oh, how much money?
Six hundred and sixty.
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred.
Seven hundred.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Moving along.
No, no, so it passed?
I don't know. The other motion. Motion to deny.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Okay, someone made a motion.
To approve?
Correct.
Who seconded it?
Amy.
Oh.
Okay, you ready for a vote?
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cumbaba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilman Curry?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, folks, moving along. City Attorney's items, you have something for us there?
I have, I have only one item, and that is that we have received a settlement offer in the Three Hard Working Americans Landhold versus City of Benita Springs lawsuit. This is case number twenty-one dash C A dash four two eight five. This was known as the Saphira Land Use Determination and Rezoning Request. That was denied over almost two years ago at this point. I would request an executive session to be set, when I'll get with you about your availability, to discuss that settlement offer, and whether to accept it or reject it.
Okay, very good. And Arlene's gonna contact us?
Yeah, we'll follow up and get a date.
Those are the ones that sued us out in the DRGR.
Yeah, this was the DRGR settlement next to Citrus Park.
Okay, City Manager's items.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor, Council. At this time, I'd like Community Development to come forward and present their summaries of some additional land development code changes they'd like to bring forward to the LPA and eventually back to Council.
Morning, Council. John Dolmer. These are a couple of changes that we're bringing back. I know that we've discussed several of these before. The first of which are some changes to the sidewalk and bike path standards that we have. I know that there were some questions as to fee and lieu, and also requirements of when they were supposed to be built, into what standard. We're proposing some changes that, at this time, we believe will take care of about eighty to ninety percent of all the issues, and hopefully we can get all the work done so we cure a hundred percent of the issues before we come back to you. But we don't wanna leave some of these items exposed. The next proposal would be for stormwater drains and how we're gonna be handling those Basically, when we start looking at, we're not looking at concrete, but start looking at other materials, that would allow us a little bit more flexibility in terms of design, especially when materials are short. And then the last item would be for mobile food vendors. I know that we've had some questions as to who can permit where, and the proposed changes, we feel will address those concerns and make it a little more clear, and a little easier for everybody to follow. So I don't know how much detail you all wanna go into. Yes, ma'am, Councilman?
Yes, I have a question about number two, where you talk about different sources of material under roadways and things, and that other people allow for, I guess this is PVC piping or some plastic, you know, but anyway, my question is, why did we have an alternative material? Do we think it was preferable? I mean, what are the consequences of the present material that we require, and what are the problems with going to a different material?
I haven't coordinated with John, but I can give you some of the answer, Councilman Cumbaba, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor. Over, probably over the past ten years, there's a PVC material, you might be familiar with like kind of black corrugated pipe. That really is not an acceptable to be underneath a roadway, it works in other areas. But there was kind of a development by those manufacturers where they made it more durable. It's gray, it looks, it looks the same, but it has a dual wall. And FDOT evaluated it probably about five years ago, came up with it as an acceptable alternative. The current, you know, if you didn't use that, and it didn't really exist ten years ago, is something that at least the Department of Transportation considered for its roadways. You used concrete pipe. And concrete pipe comes in shorter runs, takes longer to install, takes more labor, and, you know, when you're in a building craze, like we have been, prices of concrete go through the roof, and, you know, it becomes difficult to get your hands on. So really, over the past ten years, there's been another product that's come online, it's been evaluated, it's been acceptable. We use it, we've used it for a few years, and it sounds like John's just trying to make that an option.
We're not correcting a short-term problem with a long-term problem, that was my question.
No, I don't think so.
The material is satisfactory for what we used in the past.
It's been evaluated at the state level. We've actually installed it on a few city projects, smaller ones in areas. I don't think we've done it in any major ones, but we do have it throughout the city too.
Well, then I'm happy with all your changes.
Me too.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, we do need a motion for.
Well, I wanna ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Could we add in there on the food trucks, no porta potties can be visible to the people passing by, or residents? Actually, I think they should be off the site every night, or no porta potties.
We can, we can make a new standard, but what we do here, we're gonna have to be consistent with where we allow porta potties in other places, but we could, we could look at that as part of what's going forward. And just so you all know, we do have an LPA meeting tomorrow where these will be discussed, so we're not looking at a long turnaround time before it comes back to you. So whatever we come up with, if we don't have, we don't hit the mark, we can always make a revision.
And the other thing, I personally think, I think two hundred and fifty feet should be a bigger number. I don't have a problem with, for example, like the microbrewery out by Benita, by Hunter's Ridge, I don't have a problem with them having two food trucks on the property, because it serves that business, but I think having two hundred and fifty feet away another food truck and another business is a bit close. That's just my opinion.
If you all would like to entertain that, just make that as part of the motion, and we'll be happy to make the changes.
Yeah.
The motion, you bring it back?
Are we allowed to?
No, no.
You would basically just be providing direction for that to be part of the standard that goes to the LPA and then comes back to you for your vote.
It goes against the state statute, though, because we're gonna be regulating the food trucks.
You can regulate them, you just can't permit them.
Well.
The difference is you regulate where they can go, you don't, you don't regulate anything that the state does, which is the state has, they permit the food, they permit all those locations, they issue out licenses. And previously, Benita included, any jurisdictions limited the number of licenses for food trucks. You can't do that anymore. They're basically allowed, the question is where they're allowed. And so the restrictions that John's looking to impose are, you know, site location standards.
Can we, can we regulate porta potties?
Yes.
Yeah, you can regulate porta potties.
Even though they're part of the food truck.
Well, they, very rarely would they be part of the food.
They're there for the site. So the, you know, it's not required by, by state law that every food truck has a porta potty, but if you're gonna have essentially what amounts to a permanent food truck location, then we wanna see that there are bathroom facilities available, so it's us who are making the requirement.
And right now, we, the current requirement would be that you explain the plan as to how you're going to operate, should you choose to have a porta potty there, meaning how often does it stay, when is it removed, how often is it emptied? There are certain things that would be required to be submitted.
Could I just, Mr. Mayor, does that also mean, then, that we could have like a food truck out in the middle of nowhere, as long as it had a porta potty? Because most food trucks are near establishments that.
It would have to be on a developed site.
Want you to go in and get a beer and use their bathroom, and.
It would have to be a site that had infrastructure for parking, drainage, a place for it to actually hook up and to operate. hook up and, and to operate.
So, it's sort of doing something for nothing.
Example, example would be, um, you know, in the past, you've seen Walmarts used to be frequented by R V locations and Walmarts would build more parking than was required and, and to accommodate that. A developed site that has, meets development standards, that is a commercial site, could allow food trucks on those portions of their site where they have extra parking. If it starts to interfere with their required parking, so on a site that's constrained, a small location where the business is still ongoing, uh, maybe an existing restaurant that wants to bring in food. Well, if they took up half their required parking, that wouldn't be a location that would be not allowed. So, we're really looking at, at locations that have some appropriate spacing to allow this to occur.
We have the ability to catch those individually as they come to us because we're evaluating the plan at that point. So, so, an, an all sweeping regulation for that is really nonsensical.
But, but, no, not, you don't want to, food, food trucks are okay. And most of them are kept up and look good. Porta potties or something are, not, they're not a work of living art. You don't want to have a porta potty that's in plain view for the, everybody driving by and the residents. If they have a place where they can put, it's kind of like, it's a little better than a dumpster, but it still doesn't look real good. And it has an odor sometimes because they don't clean them.
Seen is porta potties are really a method of last resort and are not what we'll typically see proposed to us mainly because, like the councilman referenced, it's a business that's trying to attract more business and so they want to team up with a food truck so that more people come to the site. The restrooms associated with that facility would then be available for those that are visiting the food truck. We provide that porta potty option in case that there's a different situation, but, uh, to be perfectly honest, even in cases where they've been proposed, people have gone back and changed how they want to operate, uh, so that they use existing facilities.
Yeah, now, all I'm saying is put that in words.
John, to clarify, this is just the first step to, to continue to pursue the land development code changes that were previously discussed in the council, meaning it still needs to be vetted by the L P A to, for them to provide recommendations and then it comes back to council for final decision. So, you could give the opportunity for the L P A to discuss some of these items, considering the debt distance and the, uh, the portlets and provide some recommendations that council can make the final decision on. If, if that's so, the direction of council, but we do need a motion to start that process.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Perton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye. Um, thank you, Mayor and Council. At this point, I'm gonna ask Lisa to come forward to go through, write through our June financial report and then discuss, uh, some draft budget of the twenty-two, twenty-three. And after that, I would ask, I have a few announcements to make as well after that.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Council. I believe I T. might be working on our PowerPoint. Bring those up. The screen went blank, I don't know. Can't have them loaded, but I can't really see. Well, this one will be first and then this one's next. You can load them both and then hopefully I can figure out how to move between them.
The screens both.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, hi, Lisa.
Hi, good morning. Um, we're here today to deliver your, um, monthly financial report for June fiscal year-to-date. What you have here is, um, a same graph that you see each month. We, we strongly believe in that. It gives you trends, the ability to, to identify trends and to see things as they move forward as we change, uh, from month to month. This one is a pie chart that shows our general fund revenue. Those are our regular recurring operating revenues, if you will. As we move through the year, we see that our avalorum taxes, which are collected at the beginning of year, become less of a percentage. That's what we're seeing here at the beginning of the, the fiscal year. We get those November and December primarily as everyone pays to take advantage of the discounts. So, you will see that, that will become a little less as we move forward. All in all, I think this is a, a healthy percentage and consistency with the different types of revenue. You don't want to be too heavily concentrated in, in one type of revenue, especially for operating revenue. This is the, again, the general fund regular operating revenue. What we show is fiscal year-to-date, current year as compared to the immediately preceding year. The one new data point that we have here is the sale of real estate. That was the sale of the Levin lot, you will see that. We typically, um, we're gonna make a, an adjustment in our budget, next year's budget for that, just to carry that amount forward. We don't typically pre-populate the budget for things of that nature because there's too much uncertainty. So, as soon as the money's in the bank, you see it here and it carries over to be able, available for future years. And again, you know, we're still seeing relatively positive trends here. This is the general fund operating expenses, regular recurring operating expenses. You will see that there are, again, their current fiscal year-to-date as compared to prior fiscal year-to-date, we are seeing some increases, which are not unanticipated, um, due to the, the trends, the inflationary economic trends that we're seeing. We would like to point out, as we have before, we have purchased this current fiscal year, under physical environment, we did purchase some stormwater, um, and flood mitigation pumps. Those are, um, actually capital outlet items and they're not expected to be recurring. Restricted revenues. These are revenues that are restricted as to use and can only be used as approved in the enabling legislation. The initial, um, data point there, building permit fees. You can see those are significantly down from last fiscal year. There are two reasons for that and we're gonna talk about that again in our next presentation. Not only did we reduce our fees, planned to reduce our fees so that we could utilize our surplus. As you all know, these are when people pull, um, a permit for constructing a new, a new, either residence or a business. And we do, we had accumulated in the economic boom, we accumulated some funds there. We need to spin those down and we need to use those to operate on. So, this is a planned reduction. You see the other restricted there? Our, our hero, uh, road impact fees continues to be higher, um, than the prior year. Again, those are just for, um, for new construction. And we do hope that that money's actually in the bank, so we populate, those are restricted for capital improvement projects. So, that, that allows us to fund some of our capital improvement projects that we have. Cash balances. What we do here is we actually show you a snapshot in time of your cash balances for the last, for the current fiscal year-to-date and the two preceding years, which we think give you all a, a healthy trend. What we do, we're unique in that what we do with a lot of our funds, even our general fund, um, assigned balances, those are actually used to fund capital improvement projects, not only operate, but help us fund, fund capital improvement projects. When we talk about pay-as-you-go as opposed to, um, debt financing of capital improvements, that enables us to do that somewhat. And on this slide, we have a lot of our restricted revenues and we can see some trends there. You can see our park impact fees, the cash balance, and it's a snapshot in time have gone down. As we utilize them, we anticipate with the spikes that we see in our collections of road impact fees, as we spin those down, those will move down in time. And that's as, as planned for all, all local governments. I put a couple of slides in. We were able to review a couple of conferences that we have at the state. And as I've said before, our state, I think, does a great job in, in helping us, local governments, particularly, um, you know, we follow their guidelines for the, the economic predictions because we don't always move the way the rest of the nation does. And, and we all hope that as we head into the current times that we're in, that we, we won't, uh, move as severely as maybe some of the other parts of the nation, if they do. The state held a demographic estimating conference in July. They coined the term a growth recession is what they're projecting that we will have in the next, over the next five years. As you can see, the average growth rate, they're still positive, is one-point-two-nine projected over the next five years. That's, um, an average over the next five years. A term that they mentioned in the, in the conference that I thought was unique is that they coined that to adding a city the size of Orlando every year, so still growth. One new data variable that they're being reported, um, which I thought was exciting. I know y'all, I get excited about this sort of stuff. Prime working age population. So, that's age twenty-four to fifty-four. As we all know, our state, maybe not unique to some of the other states, we have a labor shortage. So, they're gonna start tracking this and hopefully help give some, um, good data to, um, businesses in the area with respect to the label, labor market. They also held, the state also held a revenue estimating conference for real estate assessments. Again, these aren't any, any unanticipated facts. We just like to make sure we state them, um, so that we know what, you know, or what our local experts are saying. The current growth rate in real estate values is not projected to continue. They mentioned specifically tightening of the monetary policy, elevated mortgage rates, and that, those combined have a dampening effect on price increases. And those are all of the, all the facts that I have for you, for your monthly financial reporting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to phase two. This is our budget update for our next fiscal year budget, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. That starts in October of this year and runs through September. We, we estimate, and we're required to estimate revenue, um, several months ago. What we've been seeing, we had dampened our revenue estimates to come more in line with what the state is projecting for next fiscal year. With some economic uncertainty, thinking some of these, um, some of our more economically sensitive revenues would slow down, you know, a little bit ahead of time is what we were hearing. So, what we're seeing here are some positive economic trends. And again, this is just through the end of this fiscal year. This is actually funds we've received. And then also, we're seeing some cautionary, um, cautionary indicators that we want to, trends, excuse me, that we want to talk about. It appears our avalorum real estate taxes, um, we budget a twenty-six, uh, ninety-six percent collection rate. That is, um, historically what we've seen in our area. It's a little above what the state requires us to do, so it's usually pretty accurate. This year, uh, we're seeing a little bit of trend and we want to capture these dollars. What we're trying to do here is capture these dollars so that they don't, do roll into the unassigned fund balance, so that then they're available for you all to allocate as you see appropriately headed forward. Franchise fees and half-cent sales tax, those are very, kind of economically driven. Those are a little higher than we anticipated, again, just between now and September. And then this is where we've added to our budget, to our unassigned fund balance, the proceeds from the sale of real estate, the Levin lot that we sold recently. Road impact fees, these collections, again, as we've seen in the monthly data, this is actually cash that's already in the bank. This is above what was in your budget before and we'll make this adjustment again if we need to. So, you guys will know what you have to carry forward. Building permit fees. What we have been seeing over the last few months, um, in that function, is that the collections are going down pretty markedly. Again, it's not anticipated. We think some of this is driven by, uh, the slowing down maybe that we've seen in a little bit of, the housing starts. We, please know that this is just between now and September. We had already populated your next year's number to be lower. So, this won't reduce any of your next year's budgeted revenues. We just want to capture that so that, um, it's available for you all in your budget model. What we've done there at the bottom is we have, um, categorized this rev, these revenue projections so that the funds will roll forward for your general fund, your unrestricted revenue, that's your unassigned fund balance piece, and then your restricted revenue. Again, we really have to separate these because we can't use them the same. They don't have, um, the same uses approved on them. So, what we have for the continuation of services budget chains, great news. We have a contract with Lee County for animal control services. That number came in and it was lower. I know. A small amount, but we do, again, we just do want to make sure that we account for this correctly. Increased level of service budget changes. These two items were discussed at your last budget hearing. This is the additional funds that we're gonna, we're directed to put towards Celebrate Benita. And then the next item is actually a capital improvement project. This is for the potential roadway way that runs behind Maria's. But to be clear, all alternatives need to be explored, should it become a situation where we need, uh, additional property to acquire? Yes, we just wanted to, we talked about it last time, populating that to get that started for consideration. And it will be funded by the general fund because it does not have an alternative funding source at this point. Our policy is if we move forward with a capital project, we always look for restricted funds first and then only go to the general fund when there's no, no other alternative source available. Summary of proposed changes. This separates the summary of changes by our general fund, which is our regular recurring operating fund and our other special revenues. So, as you can see, the net effect, the revenues that we are projected to get between now and the end of the fiscal year are increases, the expenditure decrease and the capital improvement project funding. That means the impact on the unassigned fund balances for the changes we're talking about today, roughly nine-hundred thousand additional funds. The special revenue funds would actually be a reduction. And that's a combination of the road impact fees going up and the building fees, um, projected to go down, again, in that period. So, what we're showing you is the projection for unassigned fund balance. This is as of September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. As I love to state all the time, this is more than a year in advance. These are not meant to be precise, these will, will ebb and flow, you know. Hopefully, our economy does do a lot better in this area, you know. There's some people that feel strongly about that. And hopefully, we will, you know, we'll see positive trends, but we're, we're budgeting according to what we're hearing from our, our state. And that note here is to let you know that, um, we will be recalculating these regularly. So, we start from where we were at our last budget hearing, a little above four million, and then the impact on the proposed budget changes. And again, these are the general fund changes only, uh, regular recurring operating. And then we're allocating, as we were, um, directed last time, allocating an additional million dollars to disaster reserves. So, hopefully, that falls in line with the direction we were given at the last meeting. And what we wanted to do is remind everyone of our two remaining hearings that we have. These will be September eighth at five-oh-one, we are required to do those in the evening. It's a tentative budget hearing and it will include a millage rate vote. And then September twenty-first will be our final hearing at five-oh-one, which will have, will approve the final budget hearing and it will include also a millage rate vote. And that's all that we have for you today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council. And we are still tweaking some of the estimates that we had on our contracts. We do, we already are aware of a slight increase on the building side from Community Development that we'll be accounting for in your next budget update.
Mayor, Council report.
Sorry, Mayor, I have a few, a few items just to go over with you beyond, beyond the budget update.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay. In, in an email, you all were invited by Congressman Byron Donalds' office to attend a virtual meeting. Um, I have conferred with the city attorney. They, their recommendation is that only one elected official attend the meeting in abundance of caution of sunshine law. So, if you'd like to discuss amongst yourselves who would be the person representing the city, we'd be happy to notify the congressman's office to do that. We'll also have, um, staff was also invited to participate, so we'll be listening in.
Well, I don't have a problem with that because I can call Donald Byron on the phone and talk to him personally. So, I don't need to go Zooming. So, thank you.
I'd recommend, if it's, if.
I already RSVP'd, so I'll re-take back. Cause it, it's a Zoom, I mean.
Florida League of Cities, uh, I think it's appropriate to use our representatives, so I would say Mike.
I am a representative.
Mike or Fred would be the appropriate representative.
I am a representative. I don't care. I, but I'm just saying, I will then let them know I won't be doing it. I got an invitation and I wanted to hear Congressman and so we RSVP'd.
It's mainly, it's mainly on federal issues, which, which, I'm not saying that's unimportant. A lot of that material, I, I'm not interested in going because I already participated in the Horizon Council where we, we, that was discussed. I personally think that somebody who's gonna remain on the council should go. So, I'm, I'm out anyway. But I, I'm not interested. But I would like a report because it's really important. And maybe, and I know it's not gonna be recorded, which I'm disappointed, because I'd rather do it that way. But, uh, I'd like a report for whomever goes, that's my only request.
I, I think one thing, whoever goes as a representative, we need to have a mechanism set up where.
where each one of us on council can give to that person the things that we're concerned about. Like I know we're all concerned about flood insurance rates and all that.
Mayor, that, that could be problematic in fact, that some of those issues might be voted on issues in the future, so.
I would just recommend whoever, whoever you select to be the official representative at that meeting. I'm not sure how the league's setting it up, if there's many people can just watch. But that you have the discussion of what the direction you'd like or what questions you'd like, have that now. Just probably be the easiest way to address the issue.
I don't think anybody can represent the city when councilman or the mayor can't represent the city because we have seven votes here. So they can listen and come back and report to the city council what they heard, but saying the city wants this or the city wants that, it's not, it's not kosher, I mean, or whatever you want to call it. I don't think it's, it doesn't represent the city. I don't know, they put us in a position where they want one person to represent the city. Well, we can't do that under a strong mayor, a strong manager's business.
I think the intent is to have a person participate and listen in and bring back those issues back to the council. And then if there's any further action from the council on that, that can be discussed in a, in a regular meeting.
It's not going to be like a statewide town hall where everybody's going to bring their grievances and discuss them. It'll be more an update and, you know, discussion points to bring back.
It's not going to be a dialogue, is it? No.
No, it's a one way.
They're going to say that they aren't going to take questions, but no, it's, it's not set up to be in a dialogue. So, but I, and I've recused myself from consideration for that one, but I think, you know, one of the, one of our FLC members probably is most appropriate.
And if staff is going, they can give us a report. They, they know how to do it.
Going, it's on Zoom.
There's a motion. Was there a second?
No, I don't, we don't have any. Who's, who's going?
Fred.
Was there a motion?
Motion for Fred.
Second.
Okay.
Motion was for Fred?
Yep.
Go call.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Stamer?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I did want to make you all aware, I just sent an email this morning. Yesterday evening, we received an updated lease agreement from Baron Collier that still will need to be forwarded to our partners at CBRE and Ashley Brown, an associate certified public accountants to provide some feedback to us on, as well as the city attorney is reviewing. So additionally, we offered an opportunity, should any council would like an individual meeting, we'll make themselves available for that. But you have a copy in your inbox as well as a hard, some of you have hard copies in front of you as well. I did also want to give you the current population estimates that the city just received from Bieber. And yes, Councilman Gibson, it is the University of Florida's estimate. But they are estimating now, we are at 55,502, but that accounts for six inmates. So the, the number that is utilized for state revenue sharing will be 55,496 for future. We'll be signing that document. You'll be getting a copy and forwarding it back. It then becomes effective for the city October 14th as of 2020, as our.
That overrides the census number?
So for, for state revenue sharing and state purposes, it, it is the number utilized as the estimate. Depending on if it's a federal program, they may revert to the census data. It depends on the evaluation of who's looking at it. But as far as the estimates that Lisa prepares or documents that we utilize with the comprehensive plan, we usually revert to that, to that Bieber number.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And then just to reiterate Lisa's information regarding the budget, I wanted to remind everyone, we have our regular council meeting September 7th at 5:30 PM. That is the regular time. The following day, September 8th, is the 5:01 budget hearing, the first budget hearing. September 21st, we have moved our council meeting to the evening, so you'll have a 5:01 start for the budget hearing and a 5:30 PM city council meeting. So that, that is a switch from the day meeting. And also wanted to make you aware that Dr. Margaret Banyan and Florida Gulf Coast University will be working on a second of a series of workshops for the ear. And that is scheduled from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM on September 29th. You'll be getting an email with a flyer on that. They will also be set up to take comments, to attend in person or to attend online live stream as well. And we'll be having a flyer sent out to you with all the links for that as well. It, it will be recorded and replayed back on our television station as well.
Okay. Mayor and council reports, I'd like you to make a report. Lisa, can you come forward, please? I have a request. How many?
Yes, sir.
Let's see, I gotta put this right. Number of houses in Benita Springs. What percentage of them are homesteaded and save our homes with a 3% cap? As opposed to, I don't know, snowbirds or whatever, people
Yes.
that don't live here all year round. And how many residential properties are rental properties? So there's three different tax rates. As we're looking at the income from, from the 3%, the 10%, and the, I know rental property can go, there's no regulations on the, on the rate on a rental property? Am I right?
There actually is a, a 10% cap on all non-homesteaded property as well.
Okay, so I, I, I'd like to see the difference between the number of homesteaded and the number on homesteaded.
Yes, that's the data that we'll be able to access. Now, with respect to the rental, we really don't have that kind of access to that data in the property appraisers database.
But it is covered with the.
It is covered with the, the saver.
How about the commercial buildings? What is their rate?
Yes, we can come up with that, we can add as well.
What is their tax rate? Are they 10%? Are they, are they, is there a limit to, to, to the value of a commercial?
Let me double check on that. I'm not sure that there is. There's some that do not have a limit, but some do. Yeah, I don't think the commercial does, but the residential is where the 10% is, non-homestead.
What's been presented is a 3% homesteaded properties.
Yes, I'd want to double check the percentage that they moved. That is the cap. Yes, that is the cap.
Mr. Mayor?
This year, it's a cap this year because the index that they use to compare it to moved higher. So it's either the higher of the index or 3% because we have had some years where it, it moved below 3% because the, the index that they use was less than that.
Can I, can I ask her to do one more thing? Could you do a look back over the last four or five years of how many new homes have come online? Which, because that number is getting smaller. We're, we're almost, we're not build out, but we're getting close. So we're not going to be having a big swell of new taxpayers because they bought new homes as we did in the past. I'd just like to see how it's, what the trend is and maybe get, maybe John could even give us a better estimate of what we're going to probably have next year and the following year.
Yes, what we have been seeing the last few years is what we get from the property appraiser is our new construction growth, which that does includes residential and commercial. And that's all that we know that's available for our current tax rule that will be coming into place. And that's consistently been 2.4% in the last years.
Right.
These last two fiscal years. Now, we do believe that in the past, obviously, it was significantly higher.
It's going to be lower because we're running out of land.
We will, we get closer to build out, yes, at some point. I'm not sure when that will.
Close to it.
We, we do have a lot of projects out there that haven't been built yet, thousands of units. And John could tell you that there's at least a thousand units a year we've been building. And between Rappaport Bay and Weeks Fish Camp, out there at I-75 and the Beach Road, we've got lots and lots of projects that could come online pretty soon, so. Anything else? Yes, Amy?
I have something to say. First of all, I have to, this, let's mark this date on the calendar because, Jessie, you're absolutely right. I agreed with everything you said in regard to the, no, it was kind of funny. Even your editorializing afterwards, I agreed with every, so if you have that written down. We're, we're very much simpatico, and I think it's kind of funny, and I, we, we agree on some things that we disagree on, I think, but that, every single thing, so it amused me when you said that. And I just want to say that in that topic that was brought up, it was mentioned that this was part of our unfinished business. And Arlene and I have been discussing a lot about unfinished business as I find that I'm going to be sunsetted in November. And we have so many great ideas that have been discussed in the, in the council, and we just, we don't get off and beyond the vision. So I've been encouraging the staff to revisit these kinds of things. An example is the Goodbred Grocery Store that the council doesn't feel like they want to talk about. But that's one of the things that I think they should be discussed. And even this CIP that was on there, I've discussed that very topic many times with the staff about, let's talk about whether we can do right away or whatever, because there's, there's a growing problem in my opinion. And finally, I noted that, and you probably all got this, that we, there was an email that was distributed to us from the ECL. And this is, you know, like an activist group for Astero. And they're talking about doing a survey on the Sun Trail, all right? And then they, they implied in their email that they were going to go approach the Lee County Commissioners. When we went, some of us went to that presentation of the study that we paid for in conjunction with Astero, and three alternatives were presented. And we did not, we, the council never discussed it. We never engage, we didn't specifically engage the people. And we don't have a concept of what we want to advocate for. So the problem I have with that is that if we don't have, even if we don't do anything beyond saying Benita Springs wants A, B, or C, it's important that if we have occasion to talk to a Lee County Commissioners and we, I hopefully will say, could you think about doing right away purchasing for us? We have our money and our CIP to do the infrastructure. But if we don't have something specific, somebody else is going to make that decision for us. And so I think that this is an example of this unfinished business, and there may be others. But this one is current because some other entity is being active here, and we're just sitting here and not talking about it. So if it's okay with the council, I would ask to present this in a green sheet sometime when we can get information. Get, our staff has worked on this. Sean is there. And just, let's get an update. Maybe the MPO has done something. I don't know anything about what's happening other than that research report was presented in public and quite a few people were there. I'd say most of the people were from Astero. Not there's anything wrong with Astero, but our people didn't really participate. I'd like us to at least say, this is where we're leaning. And on some of these other things, even if we don't want to go forward, let's make a decision that we know, the concept, even the vision that we talked about today, we should have a vision. We could do it in little steps, but at least we know where we're going. We don't have the roadmap. I guess that's, I'm talking too long, but I, if that's okay, I want to do the green sheet. And if there's anything else, we could do another green sheet on all these other things. To just make a list and, and, and make us pay attention and make a decision.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Laura?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm good.
Chris, Mike, Jessie?
Okay. Real quick, I'd like to say, I was glad we got to vote for GTC Kayaks continuation for another year and the consent agenda. I didn't bring it out, but, you know, I'm sure John was pretty happy about that one. And I know that Aaron will do everything he can to give a, you know, serve our parks the best he can for the duration of this contract. And we can figure it out later, but, you know, it going on the consent agenda, I don't think that it wasn't, it was, that it went unnoticed by us. So we're rooting for you, John. Well, we're rooting for you, Aaron. And, you know, John, I'm, I'm sure you're probably pretty happy about that one today, so. Also, I went to Crowe yesterday, and if none of y'all have ever been to Crowe up in Sanibel, they're doing amazing work, research work. One of the things that just blew my mind, and I just want to share it with you, is in conjunction with Sanibel Captiva Foundation, they've actually developed and have been using and written a study on treatment for red tide issues. And it normally manifests through birds first. And it's similar to a process that was developed a couple of years ago in regards to how you deal with birds of prey that, that ingest mice that have been poisoned. So they have, they have literally come up with a process when these birds are coming into Crowe that have had, you know, people are finding them on the beach and they're disoriented or they can't fly or whatever. It's red tide symptoms, and they have, with SECF, created a process where now they've already treated hundreds, and it's been published, of birds on how to deal with red tide symptoms on the animals. And additionally, they're getting the animals they found, they're finding the specific types of birds before the red tide even comes in. So where they're eating it, they're getting this red tide stuff, and before it even gets to a place where we're seeing it. And then, you know, the birds come in and then the red tide comes in. So it's, it's just amazing that, you know, something like that's going on down here, and I don't think a lot of people have heard about it. I was pretty surprised. I didn't know there was a cure to deal with animals who were infected by that. So really interesting work up there. So I just wanted to share that with you all. And then I'm not sure where the staff is at on this, but I understand we're going to have to work on who's going to be our lobbyists. So at some juncture, I assume we're going to go out to RFP for that, so.
So next up is, we would be bringing a scope of services for you to approve and an approval process. So as you know, certain contractors, we've left the decision and the interviews happen at a council level. I would imagine that's the direction you want to go with this as well. So the staff would create the process of which we review that they meet the minimum qualifications of the scope. And then it would come to you all for your recommendation on your top three that you'd like to interview, depending on how many we receive.
Perfect. And then last but not least, what Amy was saying about Rails to Trails, I completely agree. And then Goodbred, look, I mean, if we want to do a green sheet, I mean, it's going to get punted off to the next council if we don't do it. You guys are leaving. If you're okay with going there, we can. I mean, it's a discussion none of us want to have, but I think it needs to be had.
We don't have to have a decision, but let's say we're going to.
All right, so maybe we'll do.
Deal with the options, and, and no one has to say yes or no, but know that we're thinking about it other than just looking at it.
So I guess that would, that would be me asking staff to start looking at what that might look like. It doesn't have to be the next meeting. It could be, but let's, let's.
I understood the direction is, is Councilmember Corumba would like a green sheet the next meeting to discuss Rails to Trails.
Right, I'm talking Goodbred, though.
Yes, so she can add Goodbred.
On one, well, just to knock them out of one green sheet.
Yeah, well, that's what I said. I think you need two separate.
We have two separate.
There's two separate sets of direction, but we can accommodate that for the next meeting.
Very good. Fred?
Yeah, I have several things. First of all, at the League of Cities meeting, a number of things were talked about at a couple of meetings that I went to. The merit, this infrastructure bill that got passed, they indicated that there's a big opportunity for cities like ourselves to get a lot of things done. And the things that will sell the easiest are things that, if we do something where we're doing it in conjunction with Lee County or we do something that has a very favorable impact, not just in Benita, but impacts Lee County, Collier County, Idili, or Charlotte County. An example would be, I'm just giving you an example. If you fix the 41 and Beach Road intersection, which is going through PD&E, and simultaneously put in the shortcuts, that's a big regional impact. That would be a project that would be easy to get big money for. What Amy's interested in is Rails to Trails. If we can find a way that we do something in what we want that connects us into another county, that's better than just something that's a bike path, it's maybe from here to Astero, for example. Now, another thing that came out, and I think we should pursue this. Part of the Bloomberg organization is philanthropic, and they're good at writing grants and under. and they're good at writing grants and understanding that. They're willing to give free training to any city that would like them to help them. They'll even come and visit a city if you want to do it that way, or they'll do it by virtual, working with the staff primarily. That doesn't mean that they couldn't have one station where council was in here properly noticed. The... So I think we want to not overlook something that's free. And they said, the thing a lot of people don't realize is that there are words that you can put in your grant that automatically make you lose. But they... So they can help you with that knowledge as well. The other thing I would like, at least... Maybe Matt can contact the right people. But, you know, we had this summer bad readings at the beach water when the other beaches were good. So that tells me... You don't have to be a genius to say, well, if only our beach is having a problem. It's got to be something that's coming more from our landmass into it as opposed to coming down through the Gulf. Because if it was coming through the Gulf, other beaches would have been getting those high counts. So my thought is, maybe the Florida Gulf Coast with the contracts we have could come up with some kind of readings that they do that might track that. I don't know if... Maybe it's impossible, but I think it's at least worth talking about. So that's it.
To clarify the readings... So to give you a little bit of basis for that, the readings are done weekly on a Monday. The times that we were located as considerable of elevated level...
Yeah.
There was readings that were also higher at other locations. It just didn't trigger that number that required the warning. So if you look at those readings, we weren't completely isolated, but we just made the number slightly higher that created that second reading to occur, which had the warnings. So they are tracking all of it unilaterally, but there were higher numbers regionally as well.
Mr. Mayor, could I just mention something? I called Captain Lee, who's on vacation, hopefully having a wonderful time. But then I talked to Lieutenant Decker?
Decus.
Decus. And he said the drive-by shootings that we're hearing about at the Benson Groceries, it's sort of... Well, alcohol's involved and friends kind of fighting over, you know, you owe me money. So there was one incident. And they are taking extra care and showing up there regularly and by the 7-Eleven regularly. And so they're doing extra patrolling around downtown so that we don't go backwards.
And to clarify, shooting, G, singular?
I know, but there was a report that there were two shootings and that somebody's car was struck. So I'm just saying that there was one shooting. But I had people calling me about it, so... And our deputies are on top of it and taking care of it.
Very good, very good. Public comment? Go ahead, Ron.
I didn't know if you were going to do minutes first, but that's okay.
Oh, shit.
I can wait.
Yeah.
Approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Vote.
Councilwoman Burden?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Stanmeyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Thank you.
Bye, Tony.
I just want to stick with the agenda. So Ron George from the Little Hickory Island area. And I've been approached by a lot of residents in Bonita Springs that are interested in our current city activities associated with affordable, attainable housing. And as you probably all know, to be a good place to live, a town must have sufficient accommodation for everyone to live here. It must be able to attract the key workers who are essential to that town's success. I did a little research and I realized Bonita Springs, at least if this is all accurate, and I apologize if it isn't, back in 2006 had a resolution for Affordable Housing Cash Contribution Rate. I also noticed, I think it was at the last meeting, where there is this planned multifamily dwelling on the northeast intersection of Beach Road and I-75. And the bonus density agreement is supposed to be about $1.3 million as a payment to the city. And I assume that's going to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. My concern is whether or not the city has an active program to use these targeted funds. And if not, I just would like the city to start thinking about what they're going to do with these funds. And, you know, I realize that there's city... Or, excuse me, county and state programs. And it would be nice if, you know, we were able to tie everything in together and maybe help with affordable housing or attainable housing, whatever term you like to use, in the Bonita Springs area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Yes, Alex.
Oh, sorry, I brought my books with me.
That's your homework, was it?
Yes. I'm going to give you this. That's your homework. Ah, okay. Basically, you know, I have a master's degree in soil science. And when I was getting my master's, I had to give a cup... I had to have for that a teaching lab for a major professor. And I did that for two semesters. And I had to have some geology expertise in that. And everything that is important from that, I'm going to give you, okay? At this... And I have the books here to back that up. Okay, so this is yours.
We don't accept any bribes, Alex.
No bribe. The books are here.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, here we go.
Give it to Matt.
Very patient.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Whitmore for the record, active in many aspects of Bonita. I love Bonita. And I want to compliment all of you for taking the time to listen, but also think forward. When you made the discussion and decision about leaving the Banyan tree tied in with what Baron Collier might do on the bamboo lot, that's very bright. I think that helps tie it all together. So it gives us hope that at least you're thinking of awarding the contract for bamboo to Baron Collier. Somebody who wants to put that kind of money into something downtown that they have their ears open to listen to is a very smart move. You know? And to Amy's comment about unfinished business, I cry every time I see the Dixie Moon, the Goodbred Grocery. And I think between the Historical Society and the Preservation Board, we could work with the city and do something very bright with that. That's long overdue, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Kyle Moran. I first moved to Bonita 30 years ago. I spend almost every day downtown. And like the speaker before me, I was sort of touched by the comments that Councilwoman Corumba made and Councilman Purdon followed on about unfinished business. It reminded me of a mistake that I made this week. I went on to the city's YouTube page to see the latest city council meeting. And somehow, I got the sorting wrong. And I brought up the oldest video that the city keeps on its YouTube page, which was a meeting of the city council from January 4th, 2012. So that's, call it 10 and a half years ago. And it was fascinating to see. Mr. Mayor, you were there. You were sitting right in your normal front row seat behind City Manager Carl before the voters gave you a better seat. And Councilman Forbes, you were there, speaking as a member of the public, a member of the LPA. And in fact, we had a lot of good city staff that's been with us the whole time, from Arlene Hunter. Debbie, you were there as vice clerk. John Dolmer was in the audience. Nicole Perino was in the audience. We know all these faces. And I kept watching the meeting because I was amazed that the key point in the meeting was to discuss the strategic priorities of the city. And first on that list was revitalizing downtown. Talked about making it safer and bringing back business vibrancy to that area. And one of the key points there was to determine what to do with the Bamboo Village parcel. In fact, they set a deadline. They said that by the second quarter of 2012, they would finally have it... We would finally have a definitive plan for that very important lot. So here we are, we're 41 quarters later. And hopefully, we're on the precipice of actually having our definitive plan for that lot. Real unfinished business, isn't it? And I think, too, when you think through about the plan that we have, and I was happy to learn that we've got further details from the applicant for that parcel. But that's going to be a very balanced plan. It's going to bring a lot to our city. It's going to have park access and river access on site for the first time. It's going to have very tangible downside protection. If you think about that for a second, we're going to have a third party, private party, come in and put tens of millions of dollars improvements in those ground... In that ground, on city-owned property. They can't drive away with those improvements overnight. That's an insurance policy posted right in the middle of our city. They're going to pay us a rate that I believe is higher than nearby tenants pay for city-owned land. So we heard about CGT kayaks today. They pay a low rate. Obviously, the Wonder Gardens.